All right. Good evening, everybody. It's Thursday, February twenty ninth. We have the Brookfield Select Board Meeting, year's twenty twenty four. Everyone, please stand and join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. The usual announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the town. Is anyone here recording the meeting privately? Mr. Kelleher, anyone else? No, that's fine. Recording is acceptable. We just like to know who's doing it. Reminder, winter parking bans effect through April first. No parking on any streets between eleven P M. and six A M. Vehicles in violation will be towed at the owner's expense. And it doesn't say it here, but I usually say it, so I'm just gonna keep going on momentum. Snow should not be shoveled, pushed, or otherwise moved into public right of way. I know it says a little more than that, but that's what I remember to say. Brad, could you walk us through the words, please?
Yeah, F Y twenty four seventeen payroll, hundred eighty eight thousand, four hundred and forty two dollars and thirty five cents. F Y twenty four seventeen accounts payable, seventy eight thousand, two hundred and fifty six dollars and sixty two cents. F Y twenty four seventeen withholding, sixty eight thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and sixty three cents.
Thank you, sir. All right, on to the agenda. Agenda item number one is discussing the Sun Fusions post-community agreement.
And make a motion to...
Go ahead.
Make a motion to pass over the Sun Fusions.
All right, I'll second the motion, and before we vote on that, I just want to explain to the audience is that my understanding is the Cannabis Control Commission is either voted last night or is voting tonight to adopt a template post-community agreement. And so both the town and the Sun Fusions have agreed to defer discussion of this until after the draft, until, excuse me, until after the reference or template is approved by the Cannabis Control Commission and try and take advantage of that in our discussions. And so we will bring this matter back up at a future date. Thank you. All in favor of passing over this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir. All right, discuss closing town hall offices during elections. And I think we've got the dates for that. Yes, we do. Brad, can I get a motion for that so we can start the discussion?
Make a motion to discuss the closing of the town hall offices during election.
Can you include the dates in the motion?
Twenty twenty four election dates, three, five, twenty four, primary election, five, six, twenty four, annual town election, nine, three, twenty four, state primary election, eleven, five, twenty four, presidential election.
Thank you. I'll second that. And so my understanding of the purposes of this is to provide a better environment with the town hall closed and the town offices closed. That will allow the town clerk to administer the elections and provide more security and a more and a less destructive environment for our residents to vote in.
Yep.
And so my understanding is that most employees have the ability to work from home, and therefore they will be working from home. This will not be a day off for the employees. Any discussion?
No.
All right. So all in favor of closing town hall on election days on the dates mentioned, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Highway Department, Highway Department discussion. I was hoping Beth would be here for that, so. I've got a resume in here, but I'm not ready to discuss it. I haven't looked at it yet.
Yeah.
So I think at this point, it was a... I don't remember asking for this. Did you ask for this or did Beth?
Talking about the resume?
No, 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 for this item on the agenda. I know I approved it, but it wasn't something that I said, let's talk about.
We were all gonna discuss just what the transition for the Highway Department was gonna be looking like going forward.
Okay. Shows what I remember. That's okay. All right. So, I mean, at the moment, I know we were batting several ideas around in that.
And I don't know if we just wanna pass over because we wanna have the three of us for that discussion or not. You had mentioned she's not gonna be here.
Beth indicated that, Beth said that she had to go get medicine for her wife. Karen has the flu and is not, and needs the medicine. And so she indicated that she was somewhere, somewhat unlikely to make the meeting. It's like, I'm not sure if that's because she felt she would be running too late or just she would be home taking care of her wife. And then either way, it's like, take care of your wife, please. So my thought is that it's like so I, without Beth, it's like, do we need any, is there anything urgent, do you think, that we need to talk about, or can we defer this? Mr. Kelleher, as the interim superintendent of the Highway Department, would you, is there something you would like to talk to us about?
Wanna come up? Or I don't know if it's quick.
I think he was just saying he's here because he saw the Highway Department on the agenda. The agenda item is discussion position. Okay.
And I believe it was supposed to be about both.
Yeah, I think the agenda item allows us to discuss all positions. And so I think, so I will take advantage of, so that's helping focus me. I would say that we should, it's like, we have, at the moment, we have an open permanent superintendent. Gary's our interim superintendent. We have an open foreman position, and we have an open laborer position. Do I remember that correctly? Okay. And so, and right now, the Highway Department has, with luck and not too much snow, the Highway Department has been able to operate with the existing staff. But I think it is, I think it falls to us to bring them up to full staffing. And that is something that, at the very least, you and I can talk about moving forward. And so I know that we posted the foreman position and the laborer position.
Are they posted?
Karen?
Well, I mean, on the website, but not in the newspaper.
Yeah, but we did post them publicly to meet the bylaw requirement. Okay, thank you, Lindsay. Yes, I think that, got it. Okay, that's, okay. Let me just make that.
Yes, the foreman is listed on, it's under operator ones, so sometimes that's confusing.
All right, and I know, I know we're looking for the, I know we're looking for the permanent superintendent, but it's like, that seems to be a going slower than hoped. And so the thought is, at the very least, we can talk about bringing, filling that foreman position.
Yeah, and I mean, I think Beth's experience and advice.
So I would say what we should do is, I know we have some applicants. And so what we may wanna do is schedule an executive session to review those and consider the candidates. Because I, my understanding is that we are allowed to, we are allowed to winnow down the list of applicants in executive session, and then the candidates that we wish to entertain, we would then interview in an open meeting.
Yep.
Okay. All right, then I will, I'll work with you and Beth to find a time to make that happen. We'll see about making that happen next week.
Okay.
All right. And then I will also, as part of that, we'll probably review any of the applicants, any applicants we may have received or have received for the superintendent position. I think that would be a, if we're going to meet then, we should probably talk about any superintendent candidates and see if any of them are of interest to us that we wanna then bring in for a meeting.
Is the superintendent job reposted, though? I don't think it's been posted for the new deadline of applications.
Lindsay, would you like to come up and talk? No, I mean, it just, I mean, the, my recor, Karen, we posted the, did we post the superintendent position?
It's not been posted, no.
Okay.
Remember, we were, you said to do it at the meeting, and then you would, it was suggested that you don't do it.
I thought that was the, I know with the interim superintendent, we had talked about posting that. And then I guess I'll say some new information came to light, and we realized that that wasn't needed to do what we needed, what we wanted to do. And so we decided to save the town money and not post it.
No, you did change, you edited the application, the job description, but no, you never said to post it.
Okay. Well, then we should take care of that. And we have the job description here, highway superintendent. Give me a moment. Because I thought we edited, I thought we modified the interim superintendent.
Well, you edited, you edited the highway superintendent. If you look, when you said the
It doesn't appear to be.
Education and experience, the other requirements, before it said it was required, and this is preferred, you changed some wording on that. To make it a little less restrictive.
Yeah, all right, I see these, and I heard wind, like it was whistling, like we had a cracked window or something. It's like, it's blowing. All right, Brad, so do you, what do you think? Do we wanna post this highway superintendent again and try and push that search forward? I mean, we've got, I mean, we have Gary now, but it's, he's not gonna last forever.
Right.
You know, that came out really badly. He's eventually gonna get tired of listening to me talk and move on to a more peaceful location, is what I think I was trying to say.
Yeah, I would just preface that with, just confirm with Beth that this is accurate, if she was okay with what's in here.
Okay, then, let's see.
Well, she's the one that made most of the changes, I remember.
And this is the edited one? Okay. Yeah, if this is the edited one, then.
Yeah. Well, then why don't we, yeah, then why don't we just pending, pending Beth confirming that, yes, this is, this is what she had in mind, since she's not here. And I wanna make sure that if she was, and since she was the one making most of the suggestions, she has the most clearly in her head. It's like pending that, then we go and get that back up on the town website and try and figure out where else it can go. We can post it to Indeed.
Well, we can't post it to Indeed because Indeed requires a credit card. We don't have a town credit card, so that's what I ran until last time.
I'll get reimbursed. We'll make it happen.
So do you want, what papers do you want? Do you want it in the Stonebridge internal papers and on Indeed and the town website, or?
Yeah, I mean, Southbridge and, yeah, I was gonna say, the telegram's obscenely expensive, if I recall you what you told me. So I'm thinking we'll post around here, and we should also find a we should, we should find, we should find where the Highway Department superintendents tend to hang out, or at least get their information.
Well, you know, you could also post on the Beacon, which is on the M M A website, and also the Beacon, which they used to mail it to you. Now it's on the website. I could check into that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'm thinking, because I know, I know there's a town, like there's a
Do you have any advice somewhere to go?
Yeah, you could share it with our, like the
Yeah, you guys must have some Intranet, right?
That would be Thank you. That's exactly what I was hoping for. It's like, get it to the people who are most likely to be able to fill the position. All right. So let's do that. Let's see, so so Karen, could you send a copy of the, once we have the job posting ready to go, can you send a link to Lindsay and Gary so that they can share it and bring it to the attention of their networks? Thank you. And Brad, since we talked about discussing the foreman positions, let's, can you bring out your calendar? Let's try and pick a time, and then we can, for either Tuesday or Thursday next week. And then we can see if Beth's available, when we can get, when we can reach out to her. I can do Tuesday and Thursday. Since we have, already have a select board meeting scheduled for next Thursday, could you do Tuesday during the day?
Tuesday during the day or Thursday?
Yeah, actually, we can't meet here on Tuesday because it's election day, building's closed. So, because we just decided.
Or we can meet at the police station.
Oh, you're right. Good point.
Right?
Yes, we could. That's a lot.
I'll have to check. I think it's open. I don't know. Or you could do Wednesday, no? You don't wanna do Wednesday? Because I have to post that today, tonight.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, if we do it Tuesday.
Yes, we would have, we would have to post it before, if we're meeting at noon on Tuesday, we'd have to post it before noon tomorrow, so we get a post thing. Post it, let's post it. If the building is not available, we can always cancel the meeting. But I'd rather get the posting up there, and I don't think there's a lot of demand for the police room, police conference room at noon on Tuesday.
Okay, so what time do you want it?
Noon on Tuesday at the police station conference room. And then we'll, if it turns out that the meeting, the building's not available, or we have to move something with Beth, we'll let you know, and we'll adjust the posting as needed.
And what do you want for the agenda items?
The agenda will be, it will be, the only thing on the agenda will be executive session, and I forget which one it is, but it will be to discuss hiring. Because the plan will be to review the highway foreman candidates. And we have a highway candidate, we have a highway superintendent candidate here, so we'll put that on the list also, just giving us a chance to talk about it. And we don't have to take any action. Even if it's on the agenda, we can talk about it. If we decide to wait, we can wait. If we decide to move forward, we can move forward.
So it'll be highway foreman and highway superintendent?
Yes. And that's, Gary and Lindsay, I just wanna thank the Highway Department for keeping up with things while short-staffed for keeping things going. It's, I know we
Appreciate your thanks, believe me. And I will, if I may, add, Mr. Chairman, because you did mention the short-staffed situation. So I wanted to let you know that Lindsay has also jumped up chalked on problems. And we have a seasonal employee who's been here for quite a while. Actually, we have, I think we've talked about it, bringing him on for more permanent status, part-time, permanent, which would really be not much of a question as far as wages, but he would have to go on to appropriate systems or credits at a basic time, personal time, vacation time. Certainly, certainly a good addition to the department and helps us a awful lot.
Is this Ernie?
Ernie.
Okay. No, I apologize. I, okay.
But I want, I want to tell you that my belief is, and I know that professors, people both before that, we've clicked. The department and myself have clicked. We have a good thing going down there. And I want you to know that. It's important that everyone knows that. These guys, they know what to do. They build up a follow. We discuss what has to be done every day, have special items coming my attention, Lindsay's, we spread it, we get it done. So I'm very happy with the department. I've said that to you before. I'm certainly very happy with Lindsay's performance down there. As you know, she's a C P O. She did both the Porsche license. She's able to do pretty much all portions of her book now. So I certainly appreciate the staff that we have down there, and they've kind of, except for Lindsay, they've been acceptable to me. So I just wanna let you know, it's important, retention is important, project is important. Things are tough out there as far as getting qualified, like a C D O practice. Things are tough out there. Especially since they require, they have to take a little educational class to obtain a C D O. So it's tough. It's tough to get these people. So it's very important that we retain what we have because they're the ones. I just wanted to say that.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
And it's thus warranted any points with but I would honestly, to be honest, if she wasn't in the office, so she certainly knows intro. She certainly is familiar with the grant process and works for Kathy closely. And we go over grants all the time and see what's available. So you have a good department. I just think any more things, I know you have a good department.
Thank you. That's on, I'm sure you've already let them know that, but thank you for letting us know that you think that, too.
I thank you very much. So very important that they're, when I call it there. And we haven't had enough snow. But the bad part, anyway, with the season is not the snow. What comes snow is a positive.
How is the snow and ice accounts?
They are, the question came out today, I believe we are, have not, we are not yet in deficit.
Yeah, we're doing actually quite well compared to what we were last year.
There just hasn't been enough snow, and now we're at the point where I think the last day of school is Friday, and so it's like, no snow days, no snow days. Keep those roads clear, please. All right. Let's see, anything else on the Highway Department, Brad? I think we've done this one. All right, good.
Chair, I'm sorry, do you have something else to give for the January report, or something we have to move, or is that just something for your commission?
Just to review of there.
Just accepting and reviewing the Highway Report, the Highway Department Report. It's like, that's all. And I was expecting you to be here, so I wasn't trying to get the Highway stuff all adjacent on the agenda.
Is there something, I mean, before we ask to take it out of line, is there any questions?
I don't have any.
Or any comments? Okay.
All right, so the next thing is the town administrator position. So Kelly has Kelly has announced her intention to not renew her contract. She will serve it out, so she will be with us until the end she will be, she will be with us until the end of June, though, with her scheduled vacation, I believe. She will be leaving us shortly after any town meeting. June sixth or thereabouts. So we, as a board, we need to decide how we are going to move forward with, after she transitions out.
Yeah, and I think it was her intention, I think what we were gonna discuss about is the position and job duties and posting it. And without her here, it's probably something we should pass over, because I know she had some advice on some job description items.
Yes, that was my understanding also. And so my, what I would like to do is, I'm probably going to make an effort to talk to her directly about this, and just get a little smarter on her thoughts and work some things through with her, and then so that hopefully we can have a, the board can discuss it with her a little more efficiently. I will say that my intention, my personal intention, and I'd like to see if Brad's in alignment here, is to replace Kelly with a professional, another professional town administrator. And to continue with that. I think that the town has benefited from the, from the increase in professional staff. And I think that we should, we should continue that and not say, yeah, she straightened everything out, we can go back to the way things were.
I agree.
It's like, things, things were worse three years ago before she came in. And so she's, she's helped us, she's helped us with a lot of things. Okay. So good. So I wanna make sure we're in alignment on that, and I can't talk to you guys about that unless we're here in the meeting. All right, so I wanted to get that, I wanted to get us on record for that. All right, and then, but yeah, we'll talk to, we'll talk to Kelly about her thoughts on how the position is structured in the town and possible changes to the job description, the responsibility that could benefit the town, and also talk to her about, I guess I'll say, what to look for in successor candidates. I'm hoping that she will be involved with us in evaluating the candidates.
Yeah, and I mean, I don't know if we wanna, if this is something we could probably do tonight is before, when we hired for that town administrator, we had a committee for that. And should we email out and reach out to those people to see if they wanna?
Already expressed interest in being on the committee again. So you want me to reach out to the original committee members and see if they wanna?
I don't know, because it's a, reach out to them in the context of that the board has not yet made a decision, because I'm not I gotta think that through, because if we bring a committee in, it's going to slow things down. And I don't, and I have to, if we do that, I have to say, okay, is that going to prevent us from bringing, have someone coming onboard for January, July first, excuse me, and will that, it's like, and if so, is that something the town can what impact would that have on the operation of things here at the town? I know that my, I served on that committee in the, when we first were evaluating the candidates. And my understanding was that because the position, it was new, and to a certain extent, the position was a little contentious in the, in the, when it got approved, it was, it was a, I don't think it was a slam dunk vote at the town meeting where we approved the budget of it. Is that, it was a, I think that was a, and Beth could probably talk to this more, since she was on the board at the time. So it's like, it's one of those
Do you want me to reach out and say that?
Reach out to say the board, reach out to say the board is if the, if the board is, if the board decides to put together a search committee, would they be interested? Since they, since they served on it previously. It's like, but please make it clear that we have made no decision, and that you're just reaching out, just since they've already been there, it's like, would they be interested? It's like, because it doesn't make any sense for us to say, yeah, they were on it, and then find out that, no, they don't wanna be on it. All right. Anything else for the town administrator? No. All right. Item number five, Al Jones's resignation. Al Jones, the principal assessor of the town, has submitted his resignation. My, he is hired by the assessors, who are in our elected, an elected board separate from here, so we really don't have a whole lot of skin in that game. But I would, I would, on behalf of myself, I would like to thank Al for his service. He's, I think he's done a bang-up job for the town, getting out there and getting the, doing all the surveys and making sure that the town's records reflect what's actually on the ground out in town, so that the assessments are fair. I know, or at least reflect reality. I know no one's happy with their assessment. Few people are happy with their assessment. But it is necessary, if you have a two-story, three thousand square foot house, that the tax rolls don't show you having a fifteen hundred square foot, one-story house. That's just not equitable to everyone else in the town. And Al's done a lot of work, and he's also done a lot of work. I believe this past year, Al's one of the primary drivers of setting our tax rate. We were one of the first towns in the state to have its tax rate approved by the state. And that is a much better job than when, six, seven years ago, when Al was still fairly new to the position. I think he's been with us eight years, we're talking today. All right, and then, and I am hopeful that the assessors will be able to find someone of Al's skill and professionalism. But that's their decision. I know that assessors are elected every three years, and where someone's up for reelection this year. All right, and anything else to say about Brad?
No, I've talked with Al.
Yeah, okay. All right, then resignation, Kathy LaRaca. Kathy is our grant writer. She has been, she has also been doing a bang-up job. I talked to her today. Her husband is retiring ahead of schedule, and so she has decided that he needs some adult supervision at home. And so therefore, she's going to retire early also. The select board is looking to backfill her position. We've got a couple options on the table. Haven't, I'm sorry, I should say, I have thought about it. I don't think the board has discussed it yet. And so Brad, I'll ask you, is do you, do you think the town would benefit from continuing someone in that role of Kathy? Okay, good. I mean, I know that we have a couple different options. We could bring in someone to work part-time as a grant writer. Or we could also roll those responsibilities into someone else. It's like, I know that, I know we have some people in town who are not yet working forty hours, that could take it on and have expressed interest. And I've also had it suggested to me that we could roll it into the next town administrator's duties.
Yeah.
And so those have both been discussed, and my thought is, we should probably figure out how we want to move this forward. My thought is that if we wanted to My thought is that if we wanted to have someone else who's not working forty hours a week take it on, we could probably do something similar to, I believe the arrangement we have with Holly is she has multiple independent positions. And she manages their schedules so that they don't conflict. And so therefore, that, that could be something done with someone. Um, or we'd have to decide to roll the, we could decide to roll it into the town administrator's position. And my thought is, that's probably something we should talk to Kelly about.
Right.
But I think we're, but we're definitely in agreement that that's a position that we need to continue going. My understanding is that the grant writer is about twenty-five to thirty percent writing grants, and she spends the rest of her time administering grants. And if you don't administer those grants right, one, you have to pay the money back. And two, you don't get grants in the future. So it's a, uh, I don't think this is something that we could just hire out to a, uh, to a copywriter. It's a, it's the grant administration that is the, the bigger part of this. And with the, and we have been doing, Kathy has been doing for this town, a bang-up job of getting us money. She, uh, got us the grants for the Lewis Field Walkin' Path, for the, uh, Lewis Field, um, refurb. Uh, she got us a grant for a, uh, they just got the, uh, speed, a, a speed feedback sign that the town, the town now has. Two weeks a year, we have to put it on Schoolhouse Crossroad, Weber Road by the entrance, the side entrance to Tintasca. And the other fifty weeks, we get to put it wherever we want. I know there'll be a lot of demand for it on Quaybach Street, probably. And what else? And she's, uh, and we've received a grant for, um, electronic, um, voting clickers for town meeting.
Right.
And I think the, uh, the hope is that those will be in and ready for use at this year's town meeting, but I can't promise that. And still, they're still working towards that. Okay, and so, um, so I'd like to, and I-
Yes, send a letter with her.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, and that we should, and we should probably do that for, uh, Al too. It's like, we'll go back, so gotta get a motion to, uh, accept her resignation with regret?
Uh, I don't think we need to make a motion.
Okay, then we, all right, Karen? Would you, would you send, would you, on behalf of the, uh, select board, would you please, um, send, uh, letters of appreciation to, uh, to Kathy and Al? I know Al technically doesn't work for us, but he's done a bang-up job, and we can say thank you. All right, all right, next agenda item, eighteen Common Street. Mr. Holdcraft, would you please come on down and join us?
I would be one of the two.
I knew you would. You wouldn't have asked me on the agenda if you didn't wanna talk. Such a shrinking violet.
That is correct. Well, Beth's not here tonight, so.
No, she's not, unfortunately.
She's our ADA coordinator, correct?
Karen?
I think by default, yes, I believe she is.
Okay, well, the state said she is, and, uh, they've, they've tried to email her several times and she hasn't responded yet.
Okay.
As of two fifteen this afternoon, so I was kinda gonna, wanna discuss part of this with her, but, um, and you, of course, um. So what do you, the building is not ADA, uh, compliance?
Uh, yes, eighteen Common Street, no, I've been here-
The annexed building, so everybody knows it's the, it's the dumpy house next to the library that we purchased, what, five years ago, four years ago?
Yeah, about that.
So there's nothing about the building that's, uh, ADA, nothing.
Correct.
ADA said that, uh, well, they recommended to, to Beth through emails, I guess, that the building should not be used at all for public meetings or gatherings or any, any more than a bunch of people. They have one or two people that wanna do work in the building, they can, they can, they can do that. But if there's gonna be a public hearing, that's an open meeting law violation, and they said, by no means that should happen.
Okay, they, they told you it's an open meeting law violation?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, correct, um.
Who are you, who are you in contact with there?
I can't pronounce her name, but there's two or three people I've been working with.
Okay.
There's a counselor, um, supposed to be coordinating with Beth, and she's, you know, she's trying to get a hold of her, so.
Okay.
I spoke to Beth, uh, Monday night for about an hour, and she, she had some options for the building. But she's not here tonight, so I mean, so I guess what I wanna know is, what are you gonna do, you know, um?
Well, I would say the first thing we should do is, is, um, uh, I, I have done a little, uh, when, uh, around the time you were, uh, contacting me about this, I did some research. I went to the building and I can, I looked and I said, oh dear lord, this is not ADA accessible, there's not.
Right, not even close.
I completely agree with you there.
Right.
And so, um, uh, research indicates that, um, the, uh, two weeks ago, yeah, it's the same, it was when we last met, conservation commission met there at the same time, um, that because we were meeting here and advisors meeting in the police station, and so they typically don't meet there. Uh, historical commission and rec have, have a recent history of meeting there. And so fundamentally, I would say, we need to clarify to them that that building is not a suitable location for any meeting subject to open meeting law. And just say, it's like, I, I can't, I can't move a meeting that's been in the past, but I can make, I can tell you, do not have another meeting there. It is not an acceptable location. And if we, and if that pushes, puts a squeeze on us for space, then we do that. Um, I will, I will say that I was talking to Kathy LaRaca, who was a, a, a former ADA coordinator for the town.
Okay.
And her, and the information she gave to me, and she shared something with me from, she shared something with me that suggested or indicated to me, and that, and that was her opinion, was that a, a open meeting could be held in a building like that unless there is a request for accommodation uh, from someone with mobile, who would need wheelchair access. And if the body received that request, it would be incumbent on the body to relocate its meeting to an accessible location. But if there was not a request for accommodation within, uh, more than forty-eight hours in advance, then the meeting could be legal. And so I want to, I want to explore this. To understand, it's like, 'cause one, if that's the case, then that says it could become an overflow place and if necessary, and as long as no one asks for, as long as there's no need for accommodation. But that would also mean that we would have to be good about getting our agendas posted so that people who might need accommodation have a reasonable period of time for the agenda to be posted, for them to see it, decide whether they wanna be, whether they wanna participate or not, and put in their request for accommodation. 'Cause right now, we, the open meeting law requires us to post our meetings forty-eight hours in advance. And my understanding of the law is that, I don't know if it's twenty-four, forty-eight hour, or the guidance is twenty-four, forty-eight hours to request accommodation.
No, it's either five or seven days.
It's five or seven? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's-
ADA says, um, I told them about the building, they says that's, that's not gonna fly on this building.
Okay.
But it will, but that will work, well, we'll get into that in a minute. That will work on this building, providing-
Seven days.
Yeah, right, yep, seven days. We have it, we have it on our agenda.
Okay, but that, but I don't know that, I don't know that that is the legal requirement. Just because it's on our agenda doesn't mean that's the legal requirement. That may be what we just decided to do, here we go.
Well, no, I was told to put this on, and I, I wanna say it was from Kelly, but I'm not sure, but I was told to put this on because this, this was the, the law. That, so that each agenda-
Yeah, and so I, I found my documents. This is a, uh, Karen, remind me to send you a copy of this so we can get into the meeting record. Um, it is by the Civil Rights Division of the Department of Justice Disability Rights Section. It is the ADA Guide for Small Towns. And let me see, there's an example here. And I will not read the whole thing, but the summary is that the town holds meetings in inaccessible second floor. Um, hold on. The town, and they do some things, the ATM is moved elsewhere. The town officials also decide to move smaller meetings, which are periodically held on the second floor of town hall, to the school auditorium when they receive a request within twenty-four hours of a meeting. Which to me, this guidance to me suggests that the meeting could be held in an, in a non-ADA accessible location absent a request for accommodation. Now, this is something, so if the people in Massachusetts, now, that's federal law. Massachusetts law may be different, and you're talking to people in state government, correct? So this is something that we need to talk to and figure out, what are the obligations on the town? The fundamental guiding principle is ensuring participation by everyone in the town, um, your equal opportunity to participate in the meetings of the town. And I think we're all in agreement on that.
Right, and that's what you have to work out.
Yeah, and as, and as a temporary measure, I think that pending resolution of this matter, I think the most prudent thing is to instruct the, uh, boards and committees that they should avoid meeting in there, um, until we can confirm that there, how it would be possible to use it in a, uh, ADA, in a way that's compatible with open meeting law and ADA guidelines.
Right, that's what they, that's what they want, that's what they, that's what they wanted Beth on board, so they could work something out like that.
Yeah, and, 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 and we definitely wanna make sure it works out right, and we don't, 'cause we don't do it wrong.
Providing you can get wheelchairs through the doors, you know?
Well, my thought is-
That, that I don't, I didn't measure, I, I know, I didn't measure the doors, I just checked everything else, but I did not measure doors.
My, my expectation is that if we use that building and then someone said they need accommodation, the meeting would have to move to a new location. There's no way someone with a wheelchair is maneuvering that building.
No.
The, the doors aren't suitable, thus, that step down's not suitable, the hand, um, the doorways are not suitable, the bathroom's not suitable. There's nothing, it's like, there's nothing in there that works for someone who has access issues. And don't even get me started on the hill up to the ramp.
Oh, Jesus, oh, they mean, yeah, then we have to get into the building, yeah, with a locked garage door? Now, getting to, okay, so you guys are gonna work on that. So they, now they said, I, we, I brought the town hall up. We cannot hold public meetings upstairs, but they said, what you're doing now, someone comes down to meet someone, you know, if someone comes in that has disabilities, and they need to speak to someone in the offices upstairs, I don't know how many offices are up there, three?
One, uh, two.
Two, two.
To the town administrators and the accountant's office is up there too, though she is rarely here, and-
So that's, that's fine, they said that, I explained that all to them, and that's fine, but you can't have a public body or meetings or open meetings, you know, a lot of people up there, until we have some kind of a stair lift or an elevator or something. But they did recommend, and they should be done, is they should have some kind of signage down here, stating when someone comes in, if you're going to such and such an office, there should be a sign down here with phone numbers, you know, so they can call maybe Karen, say, hey, you know, I'm, I'm down here, I need to speak to someone upstairs. So they know when they get here and they wanna speak to someone up there, and there's nobody in the hallway, at least they have a sign saying, hey, you gotta do this if you're on disabilities, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
So they suggested to get some kind of signage that's pretty, you know, readily, easily for the people when they come in, people that don't know the town hall, you know?
I mean, I think you can kind of wait here then until we hear from Beth, if she's the ADA coordinator.
Exactly. She's gotta coordinate with the, uh, counselor there and-
Yeah, so I, yeah, I, I think that, um, I, I think we're veering off the agenda item. I didn't, I did not expect you to be talking about town hall in addition to eighteen Common Street.
Oh, yeah, just, yeah, that's fine, that's, that's fine.
But, yeah.
We can, we can discuss that when Beth gets on board, you know?
I was gonna say, but it's like, I think, I think, but the state, the people from the state will bring it up directly with Beth?
What's that?
The people from the state, the disability access people, will, that, this, the issue with town hall, they're aware of it, and they will be talking to Beth about it?
Yes.
Then, then I expect she'll take care of it, and she'll bring to the board's attention anything that needs doing.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So they're, they're just, they're just waiting to hear from her, you know? She wanted to talk to you guys first, and I think then she was gonna go back to them and tell them what's gonna happen, you know?
Yeah, and I know she, I know she expected to be at the meeting and tell you something came.
Yeah, so, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Do you want me to send an email to the various committees stating that they should avoid you because of the lettering that connects?
Karen, would you please send a, a message to the, uh, chair of every board and committee? Um, of, uh, letting them know that the, uh, the library annexed building is not ADA accessible, and therefore, while we investigate how that building could be used inconsistent with state and federal law, that no open, no open meetings should be held in there. I mean, obviously, if, 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 if another board wants to do it, they're elected, we don't have authority over them, but the committees we have authority over, and we can, I mean, hopefully, everyone will take the hint. But if not, we can get very explicit with the committees. All right, and let's see, all right, I think we're good on that one, so on to number nine. Uh, sorry, excuse me, number, that was number seven we just did. So number eight, sign the Semlec mutual aid agreement for the police department. And there we go. And Brad, are you familiar with this?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I'm assuming, I'm assuming it has something to do with mutual aid.
Yes, fundamentally, uh, we had, uh, we, the town signed this agreement, um, twelve years ago, or in twenty, twenty-twelve? Yeah, that'd be twelve years ago now.
Oh, this is the, is this the SWAT?
This is the SWAT. Effectively, when mutual aid comes in here, signing this agreement makes the people coming in on a mutual aid request automatically invested with the, uh, law enforcement powers that we give to our own officers. The thought being, if we're gonna ask them to come in and help, we need to authorize them to act as a law enforcement officer. Also, when our officers, um, go mutually somewhere else, it then entitles them to the protection of the town that they're working with. And the, uh, from, uh, Chief, what Chief Blanchard told me is that this is the same agreement we signed twelve years ago. Um, some of the signatures have been lost, some of the con, copy, contract cards have been lost, and we've been asked to sign it again.
Yeah.
To kind of reaffirm our commitment to this.
Yep.
So I'll take a motion.
Uh, make a motion to approve the Semlec mutual aid agreement.
To, to sign it?
To sign it.
All right, I will second the motion to sign it. All in favor of signing the agreement, please say aye.
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 And I think all two of you can sign it, 'cause there's space actually for all three, isn't there?
Yes, signature of chief executive, I guess that's me. At least until Brad's turned in the barrel.
No, thanks.
It's a boilerplate contract, I have to fill in the town name. And today is the twenty-ninth of February. You don't get to sign a contract on February twenty-ninth too often. All right, thank you. Um, number nine, PDE insulation engineering quote in our packet. So this is a, this is a quote from Dario Designs. Uh, scope of work is to be the owner's project manager, review the invitation to bid, attend pre-bid walkthrough, answer requests for information during bid process, review bids, and oversee project during construction. Um, the estimated budget of eighteen thousand dollars to complete this work. Karen, have we identified a funding source for this? That's my concern. Um, so therefore, and without Kelly here to talk to it, 'cause I think this is, this was her recommendation that we go over it.
She didn't expect you to sign it, which is not easy.
She just wanted to talk about it? Okay, and I think, I think the idea was that because, because of this and because of, um, Kelly was not confident that she would be here while the work was going on. The thought was that without a, um, it's like, we would wanna consider this. My thought is, do we want to, as an alternate, I know, Brad, were you involved in the police station construction? The project tenor?
No, no.
'Cause I'm just wondering, what, what did we do during, I'm trying to, Karen, do you know what we did when the police station was constructed in terms of who was responsible for?
Well, that was before my time, so.
Fair enough? All right, um, I'll reach, I'll reach out to Bill Simpson, Jr., 'cause I think he was, he's on town hall improvement, and I think he was involved.
When I did come onboard, that committee was still, it took a while for them to disband, so, yes.
But I will ask him what they, what they, what the town did.
You want to?
I was not on the committee, but, um, in that situation, we had the architect and the engineer, or the architect has supervisory responsibility as part of their contract, I believe, from that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But there was also a town representative that he was working with, but there was an engineer, architect, engineer on staff.
I thi, I think this contract is similar in that it contracts out the responsibility to supervise the construction and manage the, uh, contract, and I expect that we would, I-
And basically, what they do is they review the progress, weekly progress, uh, be sure that the work is being done according to what the plan expects, review the payroll and the, and the, uh, partial payment process.
Mm, yeah, okay. All right, so, thank you, so that, so we did it similarly there. Okay, and so, I think, uh, so I think we're going to, um, so I think we're gonna take no action on this right now, and we'll talk to Kelly about this, um, maybe, it's like, I may, it may make sense to squeeze this onto the agenda for next, uh, next Thursday. If we, if we think it's something that's gonna, it's like, let me talk to, let me talk to Kelly- If we, if we think it's something that's gonna, it's like, let me talk to, let me talk to Kelly about that, uh, next week. I'll, I'll reach, I'll reach out to her. It's like, Mr. Holcraft, since, since we're not taking any action today, can I just talk to you offline about any of your concerns?
No, no, you can check with you, but Holmes, he was the guy that kind of represented us on the board. He worked with this, he was like the doctor, he's the one that was from the board who actually inspected it.
All right, great. Can you give me their contact information afterwards?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. All right, Permitize, number ten. So we have a proposal, there we go, Permitize discussion. Uh, Permitize, we have a proposal from Permitize to, uh, bring our permitting system online to, uh, make it easier for, uh, people to, uh, submit, uh, permit requests and to manage the process. Um, I know at some point we were, let's see. I've not had a chance to review this, unfortunately. I know we were talking about, um.
We were, hold on, I thought she sent an email about this.
Yeah. Well, I think she's, I think we were, we were, we were looking at enhancements to the video system. But those are coming, the, the quote for that was, and with the idea of, instead of spending money on Permitize, we would spend that, the Permitize money on that. But I think the video system is coming in, uh, more expensive than we thought, and that this, the money here that we had set aside for Permitize is not going to be enough to do the video system upgrades. I've seen, I have since, I've, I've talked to someone who had some ideas and thought it could be done for less, and I believe that, um, Jacob, were you involved in the, uh, in the video system upgrade?
Yeah, he sent the.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you about this afterwards, about anything you might know.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not gonna ask, it's, it's not on the agenda, so I can't talk about that in detail now. So, okay. But I know that, I know that the, I, I, I know, I would like to see us get a little bit more online and do this easier. I mean, how much is this?
Yeah, I just don't know what you're talking about, the security cameras or the.
Okay. No, sorry, yeah, the, the security.
Okay.
You want to put on a future agenda, or?
Yes, please, and I hate the way they've done this pricing. They've got like, it's like, they have for this, and then they have one-time cost, recurring cost. And they have another thing, one-time cost, recurring cost. And I really wish it would just be, here are all your one-time costs, here are all your recurring costs.
And I thought Kelly had it in the budget.
I believe Kelly did have it in the fiscal year twenty-five budget.
Right.
And so, for the, for the recurring cost.
And I think there was money left over from this year's, so you would hit both.
Yeah, I, I think the intention was the one-time costs would be paid out of this year's budget, and that it would be set up, and then it would be online, and the recurring costs would hit in fiscal year twenty-five. And so, and we can still do that. I just want to just, it's just, some of those security system upgrades are important to me. And so therefore, I think we, I think we should cons, we should not move forward on this until I have. I, I would not like to move forward on this until I have a little more clarity about
Sure.
that security thing. And that was, that was an email that, about that, that I think, I think Kelly sent it today or last night.
Yeah.
And I just have not had time to get up on it. Okay. So, um, can I get a motion to pass over Permitize, uh, in, in favor of discussion at a future meeting?
Make a motion to pass over Permitize.
All right, thank you. Uh, I will second that. All in favor of passing over Permitize, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and number eleven, Highway Department Report.
Make a motion to accept the Highway Department Report.
Uh, thank you.
For January of twenty twenty-four.
I will second the, uh, I will second the acceptance of the Highway Department Report. All in favor of accepting the report, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, and now we have, uh, approval of the select board minutes for June fifteenth, twenty eighteen, and February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the select board minutes for six fifteen eighteen and two fifteen twenty-four.
I will second that. All in favor of accepting the minutes for those two dates, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A lot of things to talk about.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion. All in favor of adjournment at seven ten, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're done.